Meeting was noticed on Friday, September 2nd. Agenda was posted at the Post Office Library in City Hall.
Council acceptance of agenda?
Motion to accept agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Personal appearances, anyone in the audience that wish to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to the minutes from August 15th.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any corrections or additions? Or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, carried. Committee reports and finance. You, Mark?
Yes, just getting my thoughts together here. Motion to approve bills and payroll list in the amount of $245,843.22.
Second.
Any questions on the bills? Hearing none, roll call.
Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Licenses, I'm gonna make a motion to amend the game day liquors alcohol license premise description for October 2nd for a outdoor wine tasting event.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Three, we've moved that on with no recommendation to council for further discussion, that Harry Potter Festival event packet.
Okay, and some of the topics of discussion were the amount of people, the dollar amounts for the security. The thoughts on what you want to do about that?
I guess, I don't know, we were just discussing the possible fees from the police department and the amount of officers Tom would lay on hand that day, and I just, I guess I don't really know where to go with it, so I wanted further discussion here at the council table.
I know I did hear the chief say he could send people home if they weren't needed, but won't know that till a day, and then there's a couple hour call out anyhow, so there is that cost, so.
Is that, Tom, is that Tom, you're calling back based on if there is a large number of people or activity in general? What's your criteria, Tom? I just curious.
I'm basing the number of people that they're expecting to show up. We're shooting a lot of people. We're multiplying the population of the city, and we're going to have to have officers accordingly.
Reason I brought that, how many do we have during tobacco days? Do we have 25,000 total over the weekend? Okay, I just trying to get my numbers straight.
His estimate is way off of anything we've ever had.
Okay, gotcha.
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve the public event packet for the Harry Potter Festival and pay, cover half of the overtime fees for the security coverage.
What about the Public Works?
Sir, a second.
I'll second.
Public Works is typically just, again, historic.
Just absorbed, okay.
Yeah, and it's, there is not expected a lot of overtime, is there, for Public Works?
No.
It would be before and after.
Cause I think there's gonna be a lot of questions that are not gonna be answered until we go through it once and go from there, and then I think at that point next year we'll have a lot less questions. I don't think it's something we want to throw out the table if we don't know.
Okay, the estimate is $4,743. Two days. Now, hopefully if things don't go as well as expected, and we don't need all of them, but you at least make enough to cover.
So half this, half would be $2,371.50, correct? Is my math right?
Sounds, sounds pretty close.
So, the package states three days, right? Okay, but then do we have the overtime for PD for three days, or is it just two?
Riley, we're hoping for a whole lot of other people. And we're hoping for a lot of people.
Okay.
That area is a big pain for some of the people.
Okay. Okay, good. Thank you.
Well, it sounds like it'd be a good time to own a motel at that weekend.
There are some requests, the requests I'm getting right now is to please tell me what we can say. This isn't watching, this is.
What about houses?
Spare bedrooms, Airbnb.
Well, we could be like other people, like in Green Bay, and leave town and rent our houses out.
Yeah, do the Airbnb. Airbnb, you can do it online. Rock County Fairgrounds, they do that.
Don't write that, I'm really not gonna do that, I just.
Can't you say, can't you say this address is located at?
Good full basement first.
Okay, where are we at here?
All right, we got a second on that.
We have a motion and a second.
To approve it with paying half the overtime.
Yep, $2,371.50.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve the Veterans Memorial Building lease renewal for three years as is.
I'll second.
And that means a $900 rate.
A $900, yes.
Was there a motion or second?
Yes.
I just kinda wanted to say, come on, I thank God we have Cantina Services up there, they keep it occupied, and they're paying their rent, their utilities and stuff, it's keeping that building in good shape. Years ago, we pumped quite a lot of money into it, and I think they're keeping it in good shape.
Okay, any, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve the purchase of a police department ballistic vest in the amount of $723.99 from GH Armor.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Was that Chris or Matt? I couldn't tell who made the second.
Matt.
Okay. Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Consider bids, or excuse me, motion to approve bids for racetrack park pedestrian path from Madril Escavating in the amount of $6,610.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm gonna make a motion to award a bid to Main Line Builds LLC, amount of $9,250 for the garage loading dock.
Second.
No discussion, roll call.
Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Chris Walnuts?
No.
McIntyre?
No.
Frye?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes, four to two.
Motion to approve quotes for paving at the intersection of Lad Lane and Robert Street to Payne and Dolan in the amount of $23,864.75.
I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve the stump grinding quotes from TH3K in the amount of $1,233.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve refurbishing West Side Industrial Park sign in the amount of $770.
Second. Any discussion? Hats been out there for a while, and these little, little touch up, don't like, touch up and some additions.
Yeah.
Roll call.
I got a question here. As soon as I find my information. You were listing the tenants out in that west side. Is Reinhardt not considered a tenant out there?
He will be, that's why, what's one of the reasons we're doing the science.
That's one of the additions.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought you had it, that was everybody on there already.
No, that's showing that we're making space so that the two businesses that are out there and two more.
Thank you for clearing that muddy water up.
Don't want you leaving us tonight confused, Abe, so we'll get that straightened out. Anybody else? Roll call.
Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That's all I have for finance.
All right, thank you, we'll go on to plan commission.
I'm gonna take that, and I, we discussed extensively the width of driveway, so I'm just gonna go ahead here and make a motion to consider introducing and approving the first reading of City of Edgerton Ordinance 16-11 Amendment to Section 22.40210, access standards to modify existing driveway standards and to waive the second reading.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Now, I understand this will, anybody who has driveways where they are now, they will not be changed, but this is going forward, correct?
Correct.
With possible future recommendations to modify it.
Every ordinance is always up for negotiation.
Right, exactly.
So, waiving the second reading, this would be the adoption tonight, so, just so everyone.
Yeah, publication edits.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Motion passes.
So, I have for player district.
So, I don't have anything to report tonight, but will at next month's meeting, because we have a monthly board meeting Thursday night this week, so.
Thank you, Public Works.
Okay, we met earlier this evening, everything that we discussed has been discussed that both finance and the regular council, except for we discussed and considered some items for the 2017 budget. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Statement is to consider adoption of City of Edgerton Resolution 15-16, preliminary resolution declaring the city council's intentions for the 2016 Brailsford Junction Way Street construction project to exercise special assessment, police powers under Section 66.0703 Wisconsin statutes.
I'll make that as a motion.
I will second that.
I just have one note to make, hopefully everything's incorporated from your conversation, we did add one item for F, one other provision that would trigger special assessment payments to begin as a subdivision of the property, if someone divides a property into two, first of all, it's very hard for us to distinguish who would have the assessment at that point, so, you know, that will be part of the conversation, but that's an indication of some moving forward with development, so that would be another trigger.
Anyone else? Roll call.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Walnuts?
Yes.
This is the September 2017 budget, update on 10-year capital improvement plan.
So, I could spend as little or as much time, we could, as you would like, page 14 is a schedule that has been updated of 10s, 11 years actually, cause our next borrowing year would be, the last one in this schedule would be 2027. So, this schedule of projects is a prioritization of projects as recommended by the department heads, utilities and public works department, and it's a coordination of projects that need to be done from both departments to try to get them done, cause many of them are done in the same, at the same time. The other element of this is you established two years ago now, a schedule of debt service payments around $600,000, and that the goal was to try to not increase that for the next 10 years, to leave it at 600,000 for the next 10 years. So, what this does is this puts together our current debt service payments and what we could afford to borrow, and then schedules out the projects that fits within those categories, and they're prioritized by, you know, what needs to be done first. Now, obviously, this is a plan that, who knows what happens, something always changes, some other priority comes along, a utility has a problem or something, but in any event, at this point, this is our snapshot, and the, I just, if I'll, if you would give me just a few more minutes, I'd like to just show one other spreadsheet that is the background to this, and it simply shows you your debt service payments going out over that time period scheduled in a different way. So, much of the same information is on this sheet that is on the one that's in your packet. The colors are groupings of projects and borrowings, so everything in green is a borrowing, and then the projects that are paid for are above it. The lines that you don't see in the schedule that's in your packet are lines, this line and this line, the existing annual debt service, and therefore the total debt service. So, you can see that the total debt service line here, if you take that out over time with all of the projects that are on the sheet in your packet and listed here, stays right around $600,000. And you can see as each one of these borrowings is made, the debt payments are shown there in each, in each year that they're paid off, so it's, if it helps to see it in this way, it's just another way of looking at the information that's in your packet, but it does show the debt service consistently staying around $600,000. And then, as you see, when you get toward the end of the schedule, almost all of the existing debt service is gone, and then it's, there'll, there'll be funds available for more projects at maybe a faster rate, I would say, in 10 years, when we have a huge debt service payment that will be done, then the cadence of projects will be able to increase, which will be good for street improvements.
So, if I'm looking at it correctly, on the sheet we have in front of us, it, this tells me the total borrowing amount here of 905.893.
Correct.
Is what we have to borrow in.
We did borrow.
That we did borrow.
Yep.
And then for 2019 or 18?
19 is the borrowing year, the next one.
19, that's the borrowing, got it, okay, thank you.
So, then what you'll see is, if some projects, like just as an example, in the 2019 borrowing, there's only three projects, we borrow a million dollars in only three projects, which is really unusual, it's because of South Main. So, of course, for those of you who have followed the South Main project, we are optimistic that we'll receive a grant from the DOT for that project, it's a, it's one that is very eligible for their programs, we think that we'll receive a grant that's an 80/20 grant, 80 them, 20 us. So, if we receive that grant, and we won't, we're, we'll wait for another round to apply, then what would happen is that several projects in the 2023 borrowing would be able to slide up into that million dollar borrowing. So, this is the conservative view, if we don't get a grant. So, that puts us out several years with, you know, not a lot of projects getting done because of that South Main cost.
So, why, what makes that a grant, again?
What makes it eligible?
Or eligible for a grant?
Well, it's the, it's a collector's street, at a certain level, it gets into a program, and it's a, the county is doing the other F all the way to Janesville, right? So, it, the whole project has to work together, and so we were very optimistic we would have received a grant in the 15 round, but we were the, we were just under the line.
Oh, okay.
So, but it, we gain more points each year, as a city, we accumulate points that goes toward our ability to receive these grants, so, no guarantee, but we're optimistic that we will, so it's worth waiting in our mind for our next round of grants, cause it's such a 80/20, such a big split.
But it wouldn't be constructed till 2019?
That would be the soonest.
Okay.
The utilities, it's a huge project for the utilities, so, it's too big of a project to do road and utilities in one year, so it's gonna be a two-year construction project, if those of you live through the highway projects, it was one-year utilities and next year road, so, you know, it'll be a, it'll be a lengthy project.
So, this is the first year of, with utilities?
Nope, this is just city.
This is just, okay.
See the utility forecast on Monday, when the utility commission meets, you'll see the utilities, water and sewer a year before that.
Thank you, okay, perfect. Okay, thank you, this is good, this is very, very helpful.
So, there, there aren't any decisions at this point, certainly you can weigh in as we go through the budgeting process, this year, you won't see a lot of requests for big capital projects from your department heads, because we are in, we're, our 2015 borrowing is gone, you can see that we have spent it on the projects that are there, and those projects are pretty much complete, so there's a small residual, so the department heads know that that amount is available, but there won't be, you won't be hearing people asking for significant equipment or significant capital projects, because we know the funds aren't there.
So, the 33.7 is what's available after all that work is done and what we've borrowed?
It's our estimate, of course, we don't have final numbers, so the final lifts are in next year, so it's an estimate at this point.
Good. Thank you.
I won't go any further unless someone has questions.
Very helpful.
Then discuss and consider tour of city facilities for 2017 projects and improvements.
Should I feed it?
Yeah, if you want me to start, I'll, I'll.
We had a request from an older person, Mark Walnuts, regarding working into our budgeting process, a tour. The Parks Committee goes on a tour every year, not necessarily budget things, but they go on a tour of all the parks to get an idea of what projects need to be done, or what, you know, kind of to get a feel for what the capital condition is of the parks. But in the past, we've talked about and really have never orchestrated a formal process for the council, or, or at least the committees, to go and see equipment in particular that is at, that, you know, stored at a facility somewhere. We hear about the equipment, but a lot of people have found it valuable, those who have toured, to go and see the fleet. So, I think older person Walnuts believes that would be added benefit to our budgeting decision-making, that if that was part of our process. So, committee or council, is it a mandatory meeting, is it just a, you know, be here at this time if you can, we would notice it as a meeting, it's kind of your idea, or however you want to handle it, but.
I know we, you and me and Cindy have discussed, and I guess I kind of, when we last talked, I didn't really know where exactly to go with it, whether it should be just a council thing, or committee things, and then just bring their forward to the council, the council don't have to go and do this, but, again, I think, doing this, there's a lot of different people here to experience with different things, and know different things about different things, so, I mean, you know, I could look at a vehicle and maybe be a little more informed about it, looking at it versus somebody who knows more about computers, you know, so, I just think it would be good to somehow incorporate this into our budget cycle each year, how would we go about doing it, so.
I, myself, think it's a personally, a really good thing. I've been in a city garage for the last 20 years, and you can know what it's like, and we built the other one about 10 years ago, just kind of see the size, and the door thing, the door thing, the police station, the police cars, and so forth like that.
You're pretty familiar with that, then, are you, huh, Matt?
Yeah, oh yeah. I got a heck of a pass. No, but, it's just a good idea to see it, you know, when, or Mark got in years ago, we went to the city garage, and we saw him vehicles and stuff, the big, expensive plow trucks.
So, I love that idea, I wonder if that should be, you set a date, and that, those can, that people can show, show? Or do we make it mandatory? I don't know about making it mandatory.
We would have to post it either way?
We'd have to post it, okay.
So, it's the flavor of it for you, I think, more than anything.
Yeah.
I think if we give it far enough in advance, we don't need to make it mandatory, cause people can work the schedules around it.
All right.
I like it, though, I like it.
I do, too.
But, so how, it would have to be a, a public meeting, posted meeting, right?
You have to post it, same rules apply.
You have to have a quorum for it to actually happen?
No, no, no. Take any action, but the, that's, again, as the mayor noted, it's only if you have an agenda, but what I normally do is, you call the meeting to order here, or wherever the central location is, you adjourn to the first stop, you reconvene at that first stop, and press can, can tag along, obviously, the same rules apply to any trip, if you travel together, don't discuss it en route, because the public can't hear, if you travel separately, that's fine, you don't have to travel together, but, again, you reconvene at each site, adjourn, or you can set the meeting to the next site and just keep, continue to convene the meeting at each site until you're done.
Mm-hmm. Would, would that be also, Randy, would that include water and sewer or not? I mean, I mean, how big of an event do we make this, right? Or do we wait until the new, I mean, it'd be good to see what they're doing out there.
Well, if it's gonna be for budget, budget purposes, you're gonna wanna do it sooner.
Well, see, that would be something with the budget, but I, but maybe that's something has a.
Utility department.
The commission?
Yeah.
Pardon me?
We, we don't, the water department don't involve us budget time, so, I mean, for the council to.
Okay, I see.
To take that trip would be really, to me, not worth the effort.
The utility commission usually goes through that.
Yeah.
Randy gives a tour. I know that at the planning commission, yours passing it onsite at a couple of projects, and already puts the, really what's going on, and you see it, you know?
So, I like it, do it.
So, do we do this, I guess, at a council level, or subcommittee level, or both, or, I guess, I don't know, I would think that council as a whole makes the final decision, so maybe that's where we should do it at.
I would think we could post it as a council meeting, and just go from there, whoever can make it, if you can't make it for some reason.
Sure.
Oh, good meeting.
Waiting with Tom, then?
Yeah, you could do that with both the Toms, if you wanted to see a police station, and.
Good. Yep. Make that a motion.
Take a time and date for now, or?
I'll second that.
Well, I think you, did you say you wanted to check to see what would work best for the Toms, or?
Well, that was an individual one, if you, if somebody had to, could not make a group one, so, which during the day, I would hope, we could pick just about any weekday, unless you got some time coming off.
I don't know how many people can make it during the day, right? It could be an evening.
We got five people working here during the daytime.
Unless you did a, like a five o'clock one, started at five, or 4:30.
I mean, up to you.
I've got flexibility.
If that can be discussed maybe at a later date, as far as the actual scheduling of it, or just now approve the actual implementing of it?
We could put out a survey to see what day we can get the most people there, if you'd like, and, for your next meeting, and then you can set the date.
All right.
There are motions in the second on the floor to do this?
Well, there was kind of some motions, but I'm not sure what they were all about.
I motioned to set up a survey to figure out the best time to set up a tour of the facilities.
We already got a motion in the second on the table.
Yeah, there we go. There's a motion and a second to implement this at the council level. For a structured posted meeting.
And by implementing it, meant by sending out a survey to find out who can make it when?
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
Where and when?
Could you read that back, Cindy?
Yeah.
Implement a council tour of the facilities for budget purposes? Is that what you're looking at, or I'm not real sure what?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's the way I'm understanding what you want.
To make it basically procedure for us to
For knowledgeable, yeah, for the budgeting process.
As a budget, as a budget process?
Yep, as a step in the budget process.
Okay, so implement council tour of facilities as a step in the budget process. Good?
Perfect.
Mark, and who seconded?
I did, I guess. I can't remember.
There was a couple of them.
Yeah, there was.
But I'll own up to it.
Chris already.
Oh, he did, okay.
Gave me the smirk.
Okay, any further discussion on that?
Okay, thanks, Randy, for reading that back.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, carried. Thank you. Next item is to consider adoption of City of Edgerton Declaration honoring alderperson Dave Thomas.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Not yet, huh?
Gonna retire.
I'm so happy for you. I'm so gonna miss you.
I ain't gonna do nothing.
My district two counterpart.
That's right.
Okay, I'm gonna read it after it passes, though.
I see, okay.
Gotta make sure it passes before I read this. If there's no more discussion, I'll call for a roll call vote here.
Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Motion passes. So, the City of Edgerton Declaration recognizing and honoring alderperson Dave Thomas for his public service to the City of Edgerton. Whereas Dave Thomas admirely, admirably, oops, served the residence of the, well, he's admired too. Served the residence of the second district and the entire City of Edgerton as alderperson from April 2012 through September 2016, and whereas Dave Thomas tenure on the City, Edgerton City Council coincided with the construction of the Reinhardt Warehouse Development Project, the reconstruction of Race Track Park, receiving the USDA grant for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project, and leading in establishing the Edgerton Senior Center. And whereas Dave Thomas served on the utility commission, Parks and Recreation Committee, the library board, public safety committee, public works committee, economic development corporation, the revolving loan fund committee. And whereas the City of Edgerton was served well by Dave Thomas throughout his time as alderperson, as he established a legacy of honesty, leadership and dedication. Now therefore, be resolved, the City of Edgerton Common Council on its behalf of the entire City of Edgerton hereby recognizes and honors Dave Thomas for his public service to the citizens of Edgerton as alderperson, commends him for his dedication to the community, and thanks him for his active role in many activities, and wishes him well in the future endeavors. Thank you, Dave.
It's been an honor to serve with this group.
It can be fun at times. It's been an honor to have you with us.
Thank you.
And good luck with, move what is north?
Hey, kind of north, northwest a little bit.
Well, thank you.
Yes, thanks, David.
Thanks, Dave.
I really enjoyed my years on the various committees and on the council here.
And it doesn't recognize the time that you put in prior to being on the council, your time with the
There was another time before that.
voting board and
And I was on the committee to help design this place.
Oh. See, made a seat for you there too, and now you're leaving it.
So Dave, all said and done, how many years?
It's in the back room when we're done here.
Oh, really?
Oh, really?
So you are moving, I understand.
I am. Saturday.
Saturday, and so you have, your little walker is gone. That means you've got your dancing shoes on, right, for, are you gonna be a Norwegian dancer?
You know, I never gave that a thought.
Well, there you go, Dave. What are you gonna do without me?
Sit there and swap flies and
Congratulations and thanks for everything.
Should we move on to the next part here? Discuss and consider process to fill alderperson vacancy. In the past, we have taken letters of intent from interested people. We put a timeline on when we would take them, and then the council gets to decide who they want to put in that spot. Maybe a little, we, I think we've had a little public interview or a little input from people that were interested at one time?
Yep.
Yeah, if there's more than one candidate, you typically ask for an interview during a council meeting.
Okay, so it's up to you guys, how you wanna do this.
We need a motion here?
I, I
Are we looking for a recommendation, staff recommendation at this point?
I think we make a motion as to how to do it and the date.
I'd like to make a motion to go about, as we have in the past, by council appointment.
I'll second. It worked out good when Lyle May was retired, August, September, and John, you got on board, the same process. I'm not, I'm not really familiar with this process. Now, in the past, when, when Lyle left, or when people prior to Lyle left, how would, how do we inform the public of this, that there's a vacancy they could step up into? What has been the process?
Well, the newspaper in the past has been the primary process, but we now have Facebook and our website, which we would use, of course, those tools also.
Wonderful, okay.
Or if you know somebody.
Good old word of mouth.
After the newsletter, it could be in the newsletter. There's a September, end of September.
And of course, it has to be in district two.
Yes.
Then in, on how fast you wanna move, you know, you could have it for September, I think it's the 19th, next meeting, or if you wanna wait and have it in the newsletter and wait till October.
I would think with the budget coming, we'd wanna move quicker. Just my thoughts.
And if that's the case, when would you like the letter of intent, the letters of intent submitted to the council?
Well, if it's gonna go on the 19th, we'd have to have them back prior to those agendas going on.
Righty?
I was thinking about like the 13th or 14th. I think it's like a Wednesday or Thursday. Big dryer.
But it's already the 6th.
That's a week and a half.
Auction.
I do have a question, if I could, regarding this. Now, whoever we appoint is gonna fill out Dave's term, correct, or does it just simply go to the next election, because I believe he has a year and a half left?
To the next election. We've, we've done that.
It simply stops, no matter what, it's gonna be April?
Yep.
Okay.
Good chance for somebody to see if they like it or not.
So when is your, when is your term up?
Tonight.
Now, that's the best one.
Go ahead.
April of 18.
I have a year and a half approximately.
So then will there be two for the district? Okay, got it.
There would be a one-year term and a two-year term.
Two-year term, that's right. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
You'll have two new people.
Is the 19th enough time?
I would think so.
Okay.
We have a member, somebody in the audience that is interested in the job.
Oh, really?
I do have letters of intent also.
I was, so I was just gonna ask, are letters of intent from the person that would be interested? Okay. Go ahead.
For the mayor's attention.
So most definitely on the 19th of workforce.
By the 19th?
If we, if we already know there's somebody.
Do the Thursday before, 5 o'clock?
15th.
15th.
So we can put them in the packet for you?
Work with everybody?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is to do the process as we have in the past. Do you wanna add that, have the letters intent do by the 15th in that motion?
Correct.
Can we add that?
Yes.
Is that okay with the second?
Second.
Is that okay with the second?
I'm sorry, what?
Somebody already seconded. You seconded earlier?
Seconded, yes.
Yeah.
I'll second the second.
Okay, we need more discussion on that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Both, carried. Thank you. Okay, mayor, alderperson, the staff reports. The only thing I can think of what's going on is chili mania coming up this weekend, and Dave moving now, but Yeah, I mean, interesting is how it turns out Friday, they got that little up and coming Nashville band Friday, and they usually chili people, they'll get the booths ready on a Friday night, but there, a little bit of change in operations on it because of the Friday night type stuff. So, talk a lot of the chili people, it's gonna work out. Anybody else have anything?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna second that motion. Or Dave, you wanna second it?
I will second that.
Yeah, you should motion to adjourn.
My last official's
Motion to second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.